I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you for everybody being here on such a nice day. I'll call the Monday, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, Southwestern School Board to order. Roll call, please. This is DeAngelo Steele.
Here.
Ms. Liskini.
Here.
Ms. Martindale.
Here.
Mrs. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Bosso. Uh, here. Um, the first agenda item is public hearing, um, consistent with the telephone technology. Thomas L. Logan on April twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, notice under section thirty-three oh nine, three point three four five of the Ohio revise code, the Board of Education will now hear the issue of whether or not to reemploy school employees, retirement system retiree, Thomas L. Logan, telephone technician. This individual has given notice of intent to service retire under the school employees retirement system effective at the end of the day, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, and has applied for reemployment in this previous position effective at the beginning of day of July, two thousand twenty-four. Any member of the audience who wishes to comment on this issue would be recognized. Seeing none, we will move on. The next, um, item fraction is adoption of the, um, agenda. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the agenda for May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four for the regular meeting. Can I get a motion?
Ms. Martindale.
Thank you, Mrs. Martindale. Can I get a second? Second, Mrs. DeAngelo Steele. Any, um, additions or corrections to that? Seeing none, roll call. Ms. Martindale.
Yeah.
Ms. DeAngelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Liskini.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Uh, yes. Uh, the next item is approval of the minutes. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the meeting minutes for the two, or for the April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four meeting as attached. Can I get a motion to approve those?
Motion.
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mrs. Martindale. Any additions or corrections to that? Seeing none, roll call, please. Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Ms. DeAngelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Liskini.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Uh, yes. Uh, moving on, presentations. We have two presentations for this evening. The first will be school counseling with Dr. Eric Shuey, Executive Director and Secondary Education of Athletics. Eric?
Thank you, President Bosso, Vice President Martindale, members of the board, Dr. Wise, Mr. Garside. Thank you for providing this opportunity to hear from several of our school counselors tonight. Uh, we have three counselors representing our entire district of counselors who are going to be sharing what it means to be a school counselor in this district, serving our students and their families and the community at large. So we're going to have Rachel Longberg representing the elementary levels. Longberg, I'm sorry. Deidra Muse, um, representing the middle levels, and Heather Fares representing the high schools, and I will ask them to begin.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to come. My name is Rachel Longberg, and I'm going to talk to you about school counselors in our district. School counselors are master's level professionals who improve all student success by having a comprehensive school counseling program. Every school counselor has completed a master's degree and seven hundred hours of practicum and internship hours in schools to become effective at supporting students with their academic and career goals, as well as build their life skills. In addition, school counselors have passed the Ohio Assessment for Educators specifically designed for school counselors. All school counselors work with other stakeholders, which can consist of teachers, families, administrators, related service professionals, and school partners. This group of people make up what is known as a multi-tiered system of support, or MTSS team. This idea focuses on three levels of support for students. Tier one is universal programming for every student. Tier two services are for students who need a little extra support, like small group lessons, and tier three is for students who need a greater amount of support, which is usually individual in nature. Moving into our elementary school counselor presentation, I am one of three elementary school counselors, and this is our second year in the district. I work with Darby Woods and Harmon Elementary. Abby Russell is at Buckeye Woods, and Paige Woodson is at J.C. Summer and Richard Avenue. The three of us continue to assess our elementary school counseling program effectiveness, which aligns with the American School Counseling Association national model. This model suggests eighty percent of our day be set up for direct services and twenty percent as indirect services. Direct services include face-to-face interactions between us and students. In contrast, indirect services include collaboration and referrals. We continue to use programs that support and promote student achievement. We also use direct and indirect services to help create life experiences for our students throughout the school year. Some of our indirect services may look like facilitating partnerships with the following to support students and families. Like many positions, other parts of our day can be a mixture of direct and indirect services. We are five oh four coordinators, attend teacher-based team meetings, are traumatic event crisis intervention plan building leaders, crisis managers, and facilitate continued support, peer plan developers and liaisons, collaborate for referral services, CPI certified, and administer or support the Aaron's Law lessons. Up next, we're going to talk about school counseling in middle grades.
Hello, my name is Deidra Muse, and I am the, uh, school counselor at Park Street Intermediate. I'm going to talk a little bit about how, um, school counseling aligns to our standards. So middle grade school counselors are dedicated to meeting each student's individual needs through their data-driven comprehensive school counseling pro- program. School counseling programs are designed and held accountable to the Ohio School Counseling Standards. Programs within Southwestern's middle grades meet these standards in a variety of ways based on each school's individual needs. We are going to briefly take a look at each standard and see how school counselors in the middle grades align their programs to the standards. Standard one is the comprehensive school counseling program. The comprehensive school counseling program supports the mission of the school and ensures that families and the community are involved in helping all students achieve their greatest potential. School counselors provide programming and support to all students in our schools, not just a few students. Comprehensive school counseling programs have three domains: academic, career, and mental health supports. Essential elements of the comprehensive school counseling program include responsive crisis, crisis intervention, group counseling, solution-focused individual counseling, school-wide academic, social, career programming, and support for school climate and safety, and partnerships within our community. Standard two is direct services for academic career and mental health. Direct services that the school counselors provide include individual meetings with students, small groups, including rocks programs, grief groups, and behavior interventions. We also coordinate programs and events like Veterans Day celebrations, positive behavior incentives and interventions, and cultivate student leadership opportunities. Standard three includes indirect services, like partnerships and referrals that the school counselors make. School counselors work hard to develop partnerships within our community that benefit our students. Along with the development of the partnerships, we also integrate these services into our comprehensive school counseling program and make referrals so that all students have access to the best and most appropriate supports that they need. Standard four is evaluation and data. School counselors are always looking at data to ensure that our programs are effective. Because our programs are centered around the needs of the students in our building, we use the building's continuous improvement plan to guide our school culture goals. Standard five is leadership and advocacy. School counselors hold a master's degree in education with a concentration in school counseling. We are educators first and have a diverse understanding of the intricate workings of a school. We see the school as a system and work within the entire system to support our students, families, staff, and community. We serve on many different leadership committees, ranging from intervention committees and site steering committees to providing professional development and training for staff. Standard six is professional knowledge, responsibility, and growth. This standard includes all of the things that we as school counselors do to make sure that we are up to date with the best practices and knowledge in our profession. Many of us are members of the Ohio School Counselor Association and the American School Counseling Association. For, um, the next one. For a school counselor, every day looks a little bit different. In the middle grades, we generally like to keep our calendar somewhat open and flexible so that we can meet the needs of our student at, in students at any given time. We are always prepared to jump in to any situation and offer support and expertise, expertise to a student in need. As you can see on my snapshot of a typical week, the majority of my time is spent in those yellow areas, which are the direct services to students. Everything we do as school counselors is with a purpose and to help the students succeed. Next, Heather Fares will speak to you about the role of a high school counselor.
Good evening. I am Heather Fares, a school counselor at Central Crossing High School, and I'm excited to share with you our role in the high school level. As you can see from this slide, there are many things that school counselors do universally, regardless of the grade levels we serve. However, in addition to those tasks, as a school counselor at a high school, we have the added responsibility of helping students graduate, as well as help prepare them for their goals after high school. So to try to break it down in some kind of way, I've put them in five different buckets, if you will. Um, graduation, new students, testing, and other tasks and programming. So as you can see, graduation requirements, um, beginning with the class of two thousand twenty-three, students must meet three things to graduate. They need course credits, a demonstration of competency, and a demonstration of readiness. For course credits, students in our district must earn twenty-one credits in specific areas. School counselors ensure that students are scheduling the necessary courses and that they are getting credit for those courses. We will create plans with students and families to make up any core credit when those students happen to fail. Um, students earn the demonstration of competency by being proficient on the state end-of-course tests in English Language Arts II and Algebra I. School counselors have to keep track of which students need to retest if they have not passed one or more of these tests. Students who are unable to meet these requirements may participate in an alternative pathway where they meet yet another set of requirements to which that we have an active role. The third thing students need to do in order to graduate is to demonstrate readiness by earning at least two of twelve diploma seals. These twelve seals would take another twenty-five minutes to explain, so suffice it to say that they are complex in nature. But please allow me to highlight just one of them, which is the honors diploma seal. So beginning with the class of two thousand twenty-six, the criterion for the honors diploma has changed into an intricate web of meetings, seven out of eight items where you can replace some of the items with other items. Um, so school counselors are extremely grateful for our technology department, who continue to spend countless hours creating a document to help us keep track of all these moving pieces for every student, and they are always changing. As school counselors, we have the also, um, responsibility to educate our students, our staff, and our families about these graduation requirements. We are even now helping families understand this more by using handouts in multiple languages. New students. Throughout the year, we enroll new students to our district in our building, so it is important to us that we meet with these students and families to review critical information, like their previous transcript, their grades, attendance, individualized education plans, or five oh fours. We often will create a graduation plan with these students after reviewing their, uh, competency and their diploma seal. As we are enrolling many more new students from other countries, this process can become more challenging with regard to obtaining records and getting them translated. So as you can see, um, our average range as of April of this school year was about a hundred and fifty to three hundred new students per school building. Scheduling is up next. Scheduling is a major undertaking that takes a huge amount of our time second semester. Our main tasks are educating students and families on what the course and program options are for the following year. This can include talking about our district's accelerated learning center, known as the ACL, or ALC, helping all of our career technical programs, both the two-year and the senior-only, and other programs that the district partners with. Once students learn about what is available, we often will meet with them to help them select classes that will meet graduation requirements while keeping their career goals in mind. It is important to talk a little more around this college credit plus, or CCP for short, as this is a multi-step process that takes months to complete. Because this is such a great opportunity for students and families, we take great pride in our ability to help our student participation. Students have three options to participate with CCP. They can take classes at their high school, they can ta- take classes on the college campus, and they can participate in, um, the district's accelerated learning center. So our ALC program, if you don't know, has three different programs. We have software development, and then there's a two-year and a three-year Associate's of Arts degree program. So for each one of these students interested, that means that we are looking at their GPAs. We are helping them apply to Columbus State. We are prepping for an administrative and college placement test, and we are doing week retakes because we really want them to be able to take courses that they want. On this slide, I have broken down the many tasks that are involved with the college credit plus program. To highlight just a few, we monitor student max credit hours, we sign off on registration for students who go on campus, verify rosters with Columbus State, we collect and track multiple forms for each student, and we go through the college credit plus probation and dismissal process when required. I'm actually excited to share with you that the district had just over nine hundred and fifty students participate in CCP this year. They had the potential of earning around nine thousand one hundred college semester hours. So that's pretty. Um, as far as testing goes. Here we go. Testing is another area where we spend a great deal of our time. Listed on this slide are going to be all of the tests in which we have some level of involvement. Everything from determining which students need to take the test, recruiting for the test, requesting accommodations for the test, hours of training to be get, and be able to give the test, because every test has a different set of, of rules to follow, communicating with students and families about the tests, and ultimately of partnering the tests. So to summarize, I won't go through all of them. They are either state mandated tests, college entrance tests, tests to determine if a student can potentially earn college credit, or tests to determine an English proficiency for our students who are English language learners. So other important tasks. So like all the other levels, high school counselors are members of various teams to support students and families. Things like the response intervention, traumatic event crisis intervention planning team, and the positive behavior intervention and support. In addition, we have partnerships with I Know I Can, which is a college and career access group who helps plan events with us, like the district college fair, the free application for student aid nights, or FASPA nights, um, college campus tours, and our college application days. School counselors at the high school are also tasked with award ceremonies, utilizing Zello to send transcripts to colleges and to help students find their career paths, suicide prevention programs, as well as doing some small groups like rocks, group groups, mindfulness, to name a few. Five oh four case managers. In general, um, school counselors on all levels in the district are considered five oh four case managers. So five oh fours fall under the Americans with Disabilities Act, where students with a disability can receive accommodations. School counselors are responsible for all the forms associated with five oh fours, holding the meetings, creating plans with the team, doing reevaluations and reviews. Each building that has a school counselor in our district can have a total of around fifty to a hundred and fifty students on a five oh four. So to summarize all of that, we do all of these things while responding to hundreds of emails from students, teachers, administrators, families, colleges, and other stakeholders, offering support and resources to families, and helping dysregulated students make it through their day. As you probably know, at any given moment, children can find themselves stressed, overwhelmed, or something has upset them. We are the trained professionals to help students navigate those situations and help them learn to cope with life's ups and downs. So just now imagine what it would be like to have about three hundred and fifty to seven hundred children who at any point in a seven and a half hour day might need your help. Every day is unique, and school counselors are constantly pivoting to meet the needs of our students and families. But at the end of the day, we are so grateful for the opportunity to help students achieve their academic success, feel safe, and feel like they belong in our schools, and reach their potential. We will now ask for any questions.
I don't have any questions, just a, a couple of comments. Um, I just want to say that I, I so appreciate whenever we get a presentation because there isn't a single presentation that happens where I don't learn something. Um, and this past week, we had our first nurses, uh, committee meeting, and we were just discussing an average day for a nurse, and there was kind of, you know, a chuckle in the room because there really is no average day. And so it's just been really interesting to learn about a lot of these roles that are very flexible. As you mentioned, you have to pivot, and you have to be ready for whatever that day throws at you. So thank you for what you do for our district. Um, we very much appreciate it, and I, I love learning who worked out for you.
The way you guys get key to know what kid needs what, when they need what. I'm just that parent that goes to the portal, and you pull up that summary report, and you're like, what's Fred? We need those kind of rings when you can graduate, you know? Um, and my twenty years of living in this district and watching, um, how much they have changed, and it's been great because it's given more opportunity for our kids to, uh, meet those requirements to ensure that they get a high school diploma, but it is absolutely, um, amazing, um, compared to our days, right? Whereas just, thank you, hit it, but there's so many more opportunities, and so trying to keep track of it all is, can be challenging. So you guys are helping us do that as parents. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ladies. All right, moving on, our next presentation will be our five-year forecast for budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, from the true dark side. President Bosso, Vice President Martindale, members of the board, that, I wish I had something exciting to talk about today. But what I will tell you is that it really kind of, kind of gets me going, thinking about, you know, these are the reasons why I do what I do, so I can keep things, uh, the noise out of their heads about financial stuff, and they can just do their work. And that's, that's really what it's all about in this school district. You know, our, our staff and our, our teachers, our, you know, all of our staff just really meeting the needs of our kids. So that, that's a great presentation. I really appreciate it. So tonight, I'm going to update you on a couple items. The two items I'll discuss are the required update of the five-year forecast and the status for proposed budget for next fiscal year. Uh, as you may or may not know, the, the five-year forecast is required to be presented twice at a minimum to the Board of Education, once in November, October or November, and then again by May. So this is the May forecast. We didn't do any updates in between there. That's because things have been kind of, really been going on, on, on schedule as I thought they would. Uh, so this slide here, we'll talk to, and it's in generalities, big, big picture numbers. Uh, the black bars are our revenues, the gray bars are expenditures, and that yellow bar that goes through the middle is our cash balances. What I can tell you is we're pretty much our target, where we thought we would be with the forecast. Uh, what we tried to do is keep three to six months cash balance. I know that number of a hundred and sixty-eight million dollars looks really large at the end of the five-year forecast, uh, but when you have a budget of over three hundred and fifty million dollars, uh, that's right about, uh, six months worth. Uh, and that's where we want to be. And the reason why we want to be in place in a, in a cash balance situation like that is, is because if a storm comes, that the, the economy drops out, or something bad happens, you don't have to make cuts and, and make changes to a lot of our programs. We know we can sustain a storm. We've sustained storms before. Uh, we've had the, uh, the financial crisis. We've had, you know, uh, COVID. We've had all these things that have happened to the, that have happened a lot in this school district. We haven't been back to the balance since two thousand. So I think that's a testimony to the whole school district that we know it's important, that we want to have a, a strong financial system and a strong, strong financial, uh, base so we can provide the services that we want to provide. So go to the next slide. I'll give you a few highlights. There's not a lot to, to highlight on this forecast because everything's pretty much come in as expected. Our overall, overall revenues and expenditures, what I present in November, I try to be about two percent either way, give us a little bit of leeway. I just try to make that conservative so we won't be surprised by anything at the end of the year. What I can tell you is our, our cash balance is going to be about two point two percent better, uh, than anticipated. That's about five point six million dollar bottom line. Now, five point six million dollars sounds like a lot as well. Each payroll is about nine million dollars. So that, just to put things in perspective, this is, this is a big place with big numbers, but uh, just to put things in perspective, I think that's important. The most significant change, I would say, over what was projected, put in the original forecast and what was, has actually happened. Our average interest rates, uh, increased from last fiscal year, the same time, April twenty-three to April twenty-four, from two and a half percent we were getting on average on our, on our money to four point six percent. So you've seen a pretty significant increase in interest earnings. Now, inflation has made prices go up, so those things kind of offset each other, but we have seen quite a bit more in investment earnings. Uh, overall, uh, also, overall, uh, earnings from that same period of time, uh, in fiscal twenty-four, right now, we've earned up, we've earned twelve point five million dollars, same time last year, six point five. So a lot of six million dollar difference in interest earnings. Uh, tho- those are, those are positives for our school district. These are things that, uh, we don't always anticipate, but we want to be conservative, and we want to be on, on the, on our numbers and be where we think. Next slide. So our, our highlights on our next year, if you look at our five-year forecast, uh, if you have the, the five-year forecast document in that fiscal year twenty-five column, that's the next fiscal year, that's what I'm going to be proposing as a budget. That budget will be presented to you on June twenty-sixth for approval. But just a, a little bit of what's in that budget. Um, our revenues are going to be projected to be flat. We know we have, we're in the second year of a biennial budget. We pretty much know where we should get from the state of Ohio. Uh, our enrollment is, is pretty much flattened, so we think we're on target with what we'll receive for our, for our state dollars. Reappraisal just happened. Everybody knows a lot about that, and I'll talk a little bit about that in more detail in a second. The reappraisal, we know where our property taxes should be coming in for the next three years. Uh, so a lot of good things, a lot of good solid information that we can use to put into our revenue side. What I will mention further out in the forecast, uh, we have a, a new biennial budget that will be coming in at the, uh, will be voted on sometime around June of two thousand twenty-five. So as we're looking at this next biennial budget, the, the Fair School Funding Plan has not been fully phased in, and there's also some base cost factors that need to be adjusted probably. We're hopeful those things happen, but a lot of what we're hearing from, uh, the state legislature is that they're maybe not be as excited about doing some of those things. So it's going to be important, uh, for us to get out there to talk to our state legislators and say, hey, this fair school funding plan is a good thing. Please fund it fully. It has two more year phase in, so we have two more six, one six to one six in fiscal years twenty-six and twenty-seven. Hopefully that will put it at fully funded, and also hopefully the base cost will be updated as well. The expenditures, uh, we, we are seeing an increase of, of five point. Last fiscal year to this fiscal year. We have negotiated agreements. We have step increases. We have insurance increases. We've had some pretty large increases for homeless transportation. There's a lot of factors that go into that amount. Uh, inflation, you all know, if you've been to the stores, the cost of goods have gone up, our paper supplies, our fuel supplies, all the things that we have out there have been going up. So those are all factored into next year's budget. Staffing levels have been maintained with some, some adjustments, uh, providing a few more services here and there. We also brought back some of those, uh, Escher positions that were eliminated, or the, the dollar for Eschers were eliminated, but we're going to use general remedies to put some of that in place. We also had collective bargaining agreements that go through the end of June of two thousand twenty-five. We'll be sitting at the table with our, our bargaining in this to talk about, uh, next, uh, contracts with them. So these are all things that are out there that we'll have to, have to, uh, discuss in the future. So I'll be coming back to you on June twenty-sixth to have that budget approved. I'll be coming back to you on June twenty six to have that budget approved. Next, but not least, this is always exciting information. I like to make sure everyone knows about. Hard to see that slide. If you go to our website, you'll be able to pull this stuff up. But so what this. Slide shows you is on the far left, that's all the property type. This is collection year two thousand twenty four. So reappraisal numbers are in here. And twenty, so it's tax year twenty three, collection year twenty four, taxes you're paying right now. If you look to that far left, these are all property tax types. It's bond issues, it's operating levies, it's it's also permanent improvement levies. That's. Add them, add them all up. Those are the three types of levy schools can have. We are currently fifteenth out of sixteen in Franklin County. We were thirteenth last year, but now we are fifteenth. We are also in operating levies. We are fifteenth out of sixteenth. And I want to expand on that a little bit too, just to to give you some information about those. So we have not been on the ballot since two thousand nine. We've talked about that quite a bit. There are only three districts in Franklin County that have not been on the ballot in the last ten years. Half of the districts have been on the ballot in the last five years. So there's been a lot of activity as far as property tax levies out there. And fortunately, we've been able to stay off that. But you can only, you can only do that for so long. So I'm just putting that out there. We we don't see a, we don't see a levy in our forecast right now. We have good cash balance throughout the. Twenty twenty eight, but it's just something that we need to start thinking about. Because as we start to deficit spend a little bit, that gap will have to be made up at some point. So. Just want to put that out there. Spending wise, that far right column, this this is spending for fiscal year two thousand twenty three. This comes from a. Report called the Cup Report that you can get from the Ohio Department of Education. If you look at those numbers, we are currently spending. We are the thirteenth out of all the districts in Franklin County and. Our expenditure per pupil is fourteen thousand five hundred and sixty eight. The average in Franklin County is sixteen thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. So almost two thousand more. If you took that two thousand and multiplied it by our twenty thousand students. You'd see almost forty million dollars more that we would spend per year if we were spending just Franklin County. If you look at the state average, the state average is fifteen thousand four hundred and twenty eight. If you took that twenty thousand kids and did the math on that, we're, we would spend another seventeen million. In our school district. So tho- those are real numbers. I know I said our our budget is big and those numbers. Got to put those in perspective, but seventeen million dollars and forty million dollars is a big, is a big difference. So. I think we do a a great job here at Southwestern trying to provide the the best services we can, the best price for our community. But our community needs to know that, that, you know, where we are with our expenditure per pupil, where we are with our property taxes and that. That, you know, we are doing a good job. I think that's an important story to tell and. I'm just, I I I'm just amazed how we keep doing it. We've done a great job here in our school district and I just, I'm really proud of the whole, the whole team because we, we all do work together on this. We, we have. You know, different committees and different times where we're talking about things and how to do. Services we do and we, I think we do a great job in providing those services at a good price for our. Now, happy to answer any questions.
If I may speak for our board, I mean, I think we all know how blessed we are to have you here. With, you know, we handle our finances, invest this money in the Southwestern City School District. I hope everybody else realizes in the audience. As you were saying, having had a bond issue.
That's bondage, we have bondage.
I'm sorry.
No name millage bondage.
No millage.
Yeah, two thousand nine.
Appreciate you. Thank you so much. Anybody else? All right. Moving on. For this field, anybody? Seeing none, we'll move on to public participation related to agenda items. The first will be Susan Clark.
Hi, I'm Susan Clark. I work for the district as an assessment aide at Heimer Park, which really means I'm a jackal of trees. Tonight, I wanted to piggyback on the day in the life of a counselor and just a small portion of how I see it work. And my school counselors and services under the umbrella of New Elite School. At the beginning of May, I found out a class, I lost a classmate of mine to suicide. It was hard for me to comprehend and understand at sixty three. I knew his wife was now receiving hospice care. What I didn't know until the next day was his five year old grand step grandson attended my school. That very next day, Amanda Neblich, our social worker, and Izzy Day Jesus from CSI were able to offer the help he might need. Since the majority of our staff are all trauma informed trained, we were able to help. As as needed. At five, I know he doesn't understand what's happening. He just knows that something isn't right. When families are going through difficult times, it helps them to know we care. Building relationships with students helps them to find their safe people they often need. Often the adults in their lives, because not everybody is being raised by their biological parents. Are overwhelmed themselves and we need to be part of their village. On my friend's visitation on Friday night, I was able to assure his mom and grandma. We would be there for the next twelve days as we did for him and they were grateful. It's not only imperative that we have these services, but that they are available to every student in the district.
Next will be Mayor Ike Sage.
Thank you, honorable school board members. Garci and Dr. Wise, and a special shout out to the counselors. Incredible work. And by the way, self harms. In 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 Grove City, they were the police department services is a fifty percent twenty three over twenty to twenty four, which is. Not the kind of number you want to brag about. I I'm here for, number one, I want to compliment the school system and and Mr. Garci on the fiscal. Responsibility of this school system that's been in place. I just wish for all of greater Franklin County, that same thing was true. It is not. One of the things I want to do, my main purpose to be of this evening is to. Bring a token check. I know in your estimates, Mr. Garci, this is already built in. I don't want to be anybody astray as to this is new, new money. But since two, early two thousand, we had worked on a a plan. For bringing in retail shopping to Grove City, namely Parkway Center. And part of that was the construction of Buckeye Parkway and all the things are going on at that center. A unique agreement was put forth, very sophisticated. That put in place what we call a TIF, taxing or financing. And it it what it did, it allowed for a little bit of hiatus for the revolver not to pay taxes, but. Once that time limit ran out, they had to cough up the the normal taxes. Now, the money they paid us, which is part of my every year tonight. The nice thing about it is it's not part of the formula. School reimbursement formula. So it's kind of under the, under the line of school reimbursement. And that's also part of the uniqueness of that particular facility that we put together. Another TIF that we jointly agreed to was actually facilitated the apartments behind City Hall. Call it the lumberyard site. And part of the money that I have shown this evening is also part of those funds that we've been able to kick in and start paying a school board. So what we have, I I I have a check, a very coke and check. And I say, I know Mr. You sides already got it in the bank, but it's for three million, one hundred and four oh sixty four. And that is a huge number. I think our first check was like two hundred and some thousand dollars. And they've been in around a million six, million eight. And to say some of this is a catch up on the lumberyard, but three million one. That goes under the radar as far as the formula. So it's it's a real pleasure to work with the school board. We do get involved in some transactions. And they require all of us to agree to them. And most recently, of course, was the ability to do the Beale Park School and be able to help manage or take over the Wood Park School. So we got a win, win, win. I don't know of anybody losing on this deal. And we've had several of those. I want to compliment again the school board, Dr. Wise during his career. Of course, Mr. Garci, which is a great ability to know the numbers, know the numbers. So three million, one oh four. I'm going to try to catch it.
All right, everybody ready?
Folks, get seated. I just want to take this opportunity to thank Mayor Sage. He's been a great partner over the years and that relationship between the city and the school district is. At every place. And so we're grateful for the partnership with the city and all that they've done to support us over the years during some of the tough times as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you again, Mr. Sage. All right, moving on, we'll go to a student staff achievement liaison report with Kelly Martindale.
Thank you so much, President Bosso. I got a lot to talk about tonight, so bear with me here. I get good, right? First of all, we have Grove City High School junior Amelia Phillips was recently selected as a winner for the Institute of Civics and Public Policy Essay Contest. Her essay earned first place and comes with a five hundred dollar reward. Amelia will be recognized at the honors banquet at Ohio Northern University on Tuesday, April sixteenth. Congratulations to her and all the staff that have supported her. Grove City High School junior Teresa Angaro was recently selected as a winner for the Institute of Civics and Public Essay Contest as well. Her essay earned second place and came with a two hundred and fifty dollar reward. Again, she was recognized at the honors banquet at Ohio Northern University. On Tuesday, April sixteenth. So congratulations to Teresa and all the staff that also supported her. Central Crossing High School was named the recipient of the prestigious Purple Star School designation in April. The Purple Star designation from the Ohio Department of Education and workforce recognizes schools that show a major commitment. To students and families connected to our nation's military. Congratulations to all the cadets and their program instructional leaders, senior chief Lance Brownfield and Master Sergeant Benjamin Woods. For earning this honor due to their NJROTC programs, spearheading military engagement opportunities in both the school and the community. And along the same lines here, we have in March, the Grove City High School Navy JROTC National Academic Exam Competition. Results were announced last month and we've got some exciting results here. Team one placed sixth in Midwest Region and one oh ninth in the nation. Putting them in the top ten percent nationally. Team one includes cadets Harrison Shaker, Jack Boyer, Liam Benson, Drew Wilson, and Quentin Wright White. Team two also did a fantastic job placing fifteenth in the region and four hundred and thirty seventh in the nation, putting them in the top twenty five percent nationally. Team two was made up of Caleb Griffin, Breyer Nelson, Owen Cooper, Kevin Washington, and Gavin Luke. Team three also finished in the top twenty five percent. And that team was made up of Sage Francis, Sebastian Anthony, Lindy Amlin, Morgan Salenic, and Elijah Grossman. The National Academic Exam is an exam on naval knowledge. STEM, current acti- current events, naval history, and much more. In this eighty question exam, take the, takes one hour online by five teams. We had, of our five teams, we had five cadets per team that participated. And congratulations to each and every one of those cadets for their excellent effort in the national exam. We also want to say congratulations to Southwestern Career Academy senior Nate Thalia. Who advanced as a national semi finalist for the two thousand twenty four U S Presidential Scholars Program. Inclusion in this U S Presidential Scholars Program now in its sixtieth year is one of the highest honors bestowed upon graduating high school seniors. Scholars are selected on basis of their accomplishment in many areas, including academic. And artistic success, accomplishment in career and technical fields, leadership, strong character and involvement in the school and community. So congratulations Nate on this outstanding achievement on only five students in the state of Ohio to get this designation. Last month, managers from Ohio Health Pharmacy offered eight multi skilled health rising seniors from Southwestern Career Academy work based learning positions. Starting in the summer of two thousand twenty four. Students in this program became registered pharmacy tech trainees and their positions will continue to advance their pharmacy training. Physicians were offered at five local Ohio health hospitals. Students, should students retain employment after graduation, they will be eligible for Ohio House Outstanding Education Benefits Program for college. So congratulations to each one of these students for this accomplishment. I'm just going to throw a little ad in here. I went to the senior honors presentation. This past week at the Career Academy and I was just blown away at at. All of the different amazing things. All the colleges that were called out, that our students have been accepted to numerous scholarships. There was many different employers from around central Ohio that came to offer employment to our students and I can tell you. If you, if you need, next May, if you need something to do to lift your spirits and to remind you why we're here. Go to one of those senior honor ceremonies. It was, it was beautiful. It was encouraging. And it was just awesome to be there and get to witness that. All right, at the end of April, the Columbus Association for the Performing Arts. Announced nominees for the two thousand twenty four Capa Marquee Awards. Grove City High School has earned nominations for their spring production of Shrek the Musical in the following categories. Outstanding Student Orchestra, Outstanding Dance Execution, Outstanding Ensemble and Music Director Stephanie McConnell has been nominated for Best Direction. Designed to recognize and celebrate the wealth of high caliber musical talent. In central Ohio, this year long educational program offers selected high schools the opportunity to participate in professional theater education activities. Throughout the school year. The winners will be announced at the Ohio Theater in June. Also, congratulations to Grove City High School Navy Junior Reserve Officer Core, who was designated as the most outstanding unit of Area fourteen. For the two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four school year at the beginning of May. Area fourteen comprises twenty six NJROTC units within the region. And that encompasses Indiana, Kentucky, Michigan, Ohio, and West Virginia. And is one of twenty three overall across the country and representing six hundred and fourteen individual units. Selection criteria for these honors are based on each unit's academic competition, community service work within their area. And measured against the efforts of their peers in that region. The distinction marks the first time in the history of Grove City High School that unit has received this distinction. So congratulations. To all of those students. And congratulations to Westland High School Choir Director, Mr. Jeff Roan, who's been named two thousand twenty four Columbus Symphony Orchestra Educator of the Year. Finally, in terms of staff achievement, congratulations to the fifty eight staff honorees and sixty five PTA volunteers and educators who were honored at our Board of Education. Education hosted district awards gala last month. We want to say thank you for all they do in service to our families and students in the Southwestern City School District. And then I have one item here under our Southwestern City School District. And that is the members of Hayes Intermediate School Green Team volunteered in April at the city of Grove City's Eco Fest and gave back by playing games and making crafts with our community. And that wraps up my student staff achievement.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Martindale. We're going to move on now to items for action. Thank you so much, Mrs. Martindale. We're going to move on now to items for action, which is school and operational management with Julie.
Thank you very much. We have 11 action items this evening under fiscal and operational management. Number one is the revised permanent appropriations for fiscal year 2024. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the revised permanent appropriations for April 2024, openly X1. Investments and financial statements for April 2024. It is recommended that the Board of Education, in accordance with Section 135.14 of the Ohio Revised Code, approve April investments, CX2, and cash position report, CX3. Number three is payment of bills. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve payment of bills according to the list of checks for the month of April 2024, CX4. Number four is donations. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the donations of $7,365 as detailed in X5, and authorize letters of appreciation be sent to the donors. Number five is authorization to pay bills in accordance with Section 5705.41 Ohio Revised Code. It is recommended that the Board of Education authorize the treasurer to pay bills for months which were not processed in accordance with Section 5705.41 Ohio Revised Code, CX6. Number six is agreement with Healthcare Process Consulting, Inc. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the contract with Healthcare Process Consulting, Inc. from July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027, to process Medicaid billing for services, including but not limited to occupational therapy, physical therapy, counseling, psychological, and nursing services, CX7. Number seven is College Credit Plus Memorandum of Understanding with Columbus State Community College. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the attached College Credit Plus Memorandum of Understanding with Columbus State Community College for the 2024 school year, CX8. Number eight is Master Service Agreement with Meta Solutions. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the Master Service Agreement with Meta Solutions to provide information technology services from July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, CX9. Number nine is approval of payment in lieu of transportation. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the payment in lieu of transportation list for the 2023-2024 school year as presented, CX10. According to Section 3227.01 of the Ohio Revised Code, the average cost of transportation per child in the state of Ohio for the 2023-2024 school year has been determined by the State Department of Education in the amount of $596.43. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the payment in lieu of transportation to those residents who have applied and been approved to receive this reimbursement. Number 10, approved purpose clauses. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the new and revised purpose clauses as listed, CX11. And number 11, approval of the five-year forecast. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the five-year forecast as presented in X12. After reviewing these items, I move them for approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Liskin. Can I get a motion to approve this?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Peterson. Thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Liskin.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Angela Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Mr. Bozo.
Yes. Alright, thank you. Moving on is items for action and the policy with Ms.
Thank you. This is the first reading of three policy updates that the Policy Admin Policy Committee have been working on, which is wonderful, because the first one, the personal communication devices, Policy 5136. I want to just look at that a little bit. It's really great we're looking at this, because there's a House Bill 250 that just passed this meeting and is now on the House floor. So that's great that we're kind of ahead of the curve there, working towards meeting what could potentially be law. So that's really great. So this is great. The House Bill 250 says schools must adopt a policy that limits the use of cell phones during school day. And that's exactly what this Policy 5136 goes over. So that's really great that we, that Mr. Bozo already asked that we kind of go over this and see and update it, because it wasn't updated for a little while. So I'm excited for that one. It's the first reading of these policies. And then the second policy, Policy 5600, Student Discipline. That was a comment to go over to, kind of update some words. I hadn't looked at it since 1990. So it was great that we are kind of bringing it up to the 20s. And then another policy was also student conduct, Policy 5500. So these are really great ones to go over in the Admin Policy Committee. Great job going over all of these and Great. Well, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the first reading of these policies.
Second, Mrs. Liskin. Roll call.
Mrs. Angela Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Liskin.
Yes.
Mrs. Martindale. Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bozo.
Yes. Moving on to items for action, back to Mrs. Liskin and the curriculum.
We have two action items under curriculum this evening. The first is the first reading of Course Study Instruction Materials. It is requested that the Board of Education approve the first reading of the World Languages Course of Study Instructional Materials for grades nine through 12 as attached. And the second one is the first reading of Course of Study Instruction Materials. It is requested that the Board of Education approve the first reading of the Literacy Course of Study Instructional Materials grades K through six as attached. Also, wanted to just mention to the community that if this is approved tonight for the first reading, that the materials will be available for review for the public, May 14th through June 10th. So anyone can make an appointment and come in and review those materials. And after reviewing these items, I move them to be passed. Oh, I'm sorry. I lied. I had three. I got too excited. I spent, I spent a whole half a day going over curriculum. Number three, my apologies, Jefferson County Educational Service Center Virtual Learning Academy. The southwestern city school district's Board of Education hereby authorizes the southwestern city school district to collaborate with the Jefferson County Educational Service Center for student participation in the Virtual Learning Academy, an internet-based educational delivery system designed for grades nine through 12, which provides an alternative educational option for credit efficiencies, credit enhancement, alternative programs, and home instructed students according to need as determined by the superintendent and or designee. Now I'm ready.
We can't hear anything. You just said.
Using the Virtual Learning Academy to fill in the holes, a great example would be as child on home instruction. Many times it's difficult to find a student or to find a home instructor who can teach calculus or physics or some of the other areas on home instruction. So that's a great example of where we can use the Virtual Learning Academy to fill in holes for students that may need home instruction for a variety of reasons. And so that's why it's written in such a way to allow superintendent or designee in order to fill in the blanks for students in order to support their education.
And that contract period would be for 36 months, July 1st, 2024 through June 30th of 2027. And I am recommending them for passage.
Thank you, Mrs. Liskin. Can I get a second, please? Miss DeAngelo. Roll call, please.
Ms. Liskin.
Yes.
Mrs. Angela Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Martindale.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bozo.
Yes. Alright, moving back to Mrs. Martindale for items for action in her student school community.
Thank you, President Bozo. I just have two items tonight. Action taken on them. The first one is Grove City High School Girls' Basketball. Student athletes have the opportunity to compete at the Cedar Point Sports Center in Sandusky, Ohio. This trip will take place June 10th through the 12th of 2024. All expenses are paid by boosters. And then we have Grove City High School Cheer is requesting to travel to the UCA Cheer Camp at Miami University in Oxford, Ohio. This trip is planned for August 1st through the 4th of 2024. All trip expenses are being paid by students, parents, and fundraising. And after reviewing both of these items, I move them for action.
Thank you, Mrs. Martindale. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Peterson. Roll call.
Mrs. Martindale.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Angela Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Liskin.
Yes.
Mr. Bozo.
Yes. Moving on to items fraction or certified administrative resignations.
Okay, on the board agenda for Monday are 13 personnel items involving 1,019 persons. This includes 25 certificated and administrative resignations, one administrative employment, nine certificated changes in employment, 217 certificated appointments, 10 classified resignations, seven classified changes in employment, 15 classified appointments, and 734 certificated free employment. A Memorandum of Understanding with Southwestern Education Association. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the Memorandum of Understanding between the Southwestern Education Association and the southwestern city schools district Board of Education. There is an addendum to the collective bargaining agreement with Southwestern Education Association Collective Bargaining Agreement. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the attached addendum to the collective bargaining agreement between the Southwestern Education Association and the Board of Education effective July 1st, 2023 through June 2025. Motion to approve substitute teacher incentive. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following incentive for substitute teachers effective July 1st, 2024. After serving 50 days during the school year, substitute teachers will receive a lump sum payment of $500. After serving 100 days during the school year, substitute teachers will receive a lump sum payment of $750. After serving 150 days during the school year, substitute teachers will receive a lump sum payment of $1,000. Days served do not roll over school year to school year. Motion to approve classified substitute incentive for bus drivers, aides, and custodians. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following incentive for substitute aides, substitute bus drivers, and substitute custodians effective July 1st, 2024. After serving 50 days during the school year, substitutes in those positions will receive a lump sum of $500. After serving 100 days during the school year, substitutes in those positions will receive a lump sum of $750. After serving 150 days during the school year, substitutes in those positions will receive a lump sum of $1,000. Again, days served do not roll over school year to school year. And one message of condolence for a deceased staff member. President Izunago III. Mr. Izunago began his deployment in the southwestern city school district on August 31st, 2015 as a crossing monitor at Darby Woods Elementary School. He protected and helped cross the students at West Woods Boulevard in all weather conditions. In recognition and appreciation of his service to the students of our district, a motion is in order by the Board of Education expressing deepest sympathy to the family and friends of Mr. Izunago, who passed away on May 4th, 2024. After reviewing these items, I move them for passage.
Thank you.
I have some question. Thank you for the, under classified staff members, how many categories of classified staff are there? Are there, so the bus drivers, aides, custodians, cooks, is there any other ones? That are under the classified umbrella? It is for all classes. I just wanted, I just wanted to confirm that. It's for all classes. Okay. Because it was, I'm just saying, bus drivers, aides, custodians were picked out. So I just wanted to confirm.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Can I get a second, please? Second, Mrs. Liskin. Roll call.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Liskin.
Yes.
Mrs. Angela Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes. Moving on to public participation related to non-agenda items. We have four people who would like to speak tonight. The first will be Bob Root.
This board, this board has every right to hire any attorney it wants and assign that attorney any duties it deems appropriate. That's one of the things we voters elected you to do. On the other hand, I, as a taxpaying resident of southwestern city school district, for 52 years have every right to question whether such a hiring is a wise use of tax dollars. I'm talking about this board's new attorney, Omar Terese. Let me be clear, I'm not a lawyer, and I haven't studied Mr. Terese's legal career. I'm sure he is a very competent lawyer. But several things about his proposed work for the board give me pause. Mr. Terese's first duty, according to his new contract proposal with Southwestern, says in part, he quote, "will attend board meetings and provide advice on procedures and board policy options," end of quote. What's going on here, folks? Why does this board need advice on procedures? Two members of this board, its president and vice president, are in their third year on the board. Haven't you two learned procedures yet? The second duty mentioned in the contract proposal says Mr. Terese will quote, "review all existing legal cases and legal services provided to the district." Again, I'm a bit flummoxed. For many years, the Bricker Law Firm, once known as Bricker Netler, now as Bricker Grayden, has been retained as the board's chief legal counsel. As such, the Bricker firm has handled, quote, "legal cases and legal services." Mr. Terazi, who was hired for the first time in January, is apparently going to review this work. So let's compare Mr. Terazi with Bricker, the law firm whose work he's going to review. Bricker Grayden is one of the largest and most prestigious law firms in Ohio. It has 12 offices in three states, including a sprawling office in downtown Columbus. Bricker Grayden employs nearly 200 attorneys. Scores of these attorneys specialize in pre-kindergarten through 12th grade education. The firm's education section focuses on nine areas, everything from school construction and financing to labor and employment. and financing to labor and employment relations. The firm's website uses thousands of words to describe its education section. Now let's look at the Terazi Law Firm. According to public records, the Terazi Law Firm doesn't have twelve offices, it has one, and that office is Mr. Terazi's home in Hilliard. Oh, and the Terazi Law Firm's website lists only one attorney on staff, Omar Terazi. Instead of thousands of words, the Terazi website uses only twelve words to describe its education focus. Quote, "We also represent and help a number of private and charter schools," end of quote. Mr. Terazi's focus on private and charter schools seems appropriate for this board since several of its members have repeatedly expressed support for using tens of millions of our tax dollars to subsidize private charter and religious schools. This support comes at a time when public schools, including Southwestern, need more money. Mr. Garside noted that tonight. We rank thirteenth out of sixteen school districts in the county for spending per pupil. Let me remind you that you're members of a public school board. You're supposed to represent the interests of public schools, not private schools. Talking about money, the Bricker Firm is still the district's main legal counsel, but Mr. Terazi received thirteen thousand more than Bricker during the first three months of this year. That seems strange. Unfortunately, we taxpayers can't compare the work each law firm has done because this board has redacted from this year's invoices any description, even in the most general terms of work each firm has performed. Let me finish by emphasizing again, and I'm not criticizing Mr. Terazi's competence or ability. I'm sure he's a fine attorney. Rather, it is this board's competence that is in question here.
Yes, good evening, board members. My name is Jeff Bacon-Hestrom. I'm a school bus driver and with Southwestern School for five years now. I came tonight to emphasize a little bit about the things that I see, and I'm going to try and keep most of my statements about myself on a school bus and in transportation and with the schools that we deal with. There is, in my opinion, a communication gap between our departments of transportation and the schools themselves. There's oftentimes people that, for example, students will be placed at your disposal or at your bus to be taken home without any record that they are supposed to be on your bus. And they have been at that school for the last six to seven hours, and there was no indication to the driver that that student was supposed to go home and is supposed to be riding your bus. Excuse me. The only way we can find that out would be to call into our transportation department over the two-way radio and get that information. I believe that that gap right there can be amended. It should be, we should be able to know before they even get on the bus that they're supposed to be riding our bus. And also, there are, I heard somebody later or earlier this evening talk about the communication gap. There is, excuse me, not communication, but there is a difference in different language barriers that come upon drivers as they are driving their buses, especially Spanish-speaking students that do not speak any English at all, and we have nobody that can interpret for them while they're on our bus. And now it's moving on to Ukrainian, the Russian is the same way, and Somali, you can't understand what they're trying to say, and you're put in the position to take them safely back to where they belong, to their homes. And that is the essence of, for me, for being a bus driver, is I want to make sure that the children are safe and that they have an opportunity to get to and from where they're supposed to be, from school to home and home to school. So, you know, in reference to being able to do that, we had at one time, well, you know, like I said, I've been here for five years, we had one time, an interpreter, a Spanish-speaking employee at the district, and they had the transportation office that could help us. They no longer are there, they have been moved to, believed to this building. Next, and I know that's, I got like fifteen things around, I'll be going through all five of them in five minutes. I think that there, again, I'm trying to make it nice statements, that there should be, if we're going to invest money in this district, which sounds like we are, logistically speaking, there should be a way to better manage the routes that people are on. Another example would be, again, of myself, I'm taken from, I go from Weston High School to a private school to a Catholic school, I deliver those children, and then I come back to the second farthest away school that is in an elementary school district. So I'm spending probably between ten and fifteen thousand dollars a year worth of just fuel, just to do that, when there are schools that are closer that deliver, could deliver those students to these private schools that we are responsible to transport to. I understand that is our job, is to transport all children to the respective schools. But if there was to be somebody that could logistically look at routes and say, well, we probably should try to get point A and point B a little bit closer, a little bit tighter, it would save the district money. Third thing I'd like to talk about is, for me, we have two in-service days, we have a teacher's in-service day and we have a transportation in-service day. In essence, if those could be combined, one is in the, excuse me, one is in the fall and one is in the spring, if those two could be combined, then we could talk to each other about where we are at with our differences from the schools to the transportation. Is that me being?
That's you, Jeff. I want to hear all of what you have to say. Maybe we get with Jamie or Monty or somebody and talk to Tim. I definitely want to hear all your fifteen points you have. You sound like a common sense kind of guy, and there's always improvement that can be made. So we'll get with you.
Okay, I appreciate it.
And discuss this.
Appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Julia O'Brien, and I would like to speak tonight on the recent unfortunate and unnecessary politicization of our school board. Historically speaking, over the past thirty-six years that I have been voting for Southwestern City School District school board members, I have rarely known the personal politics of individual board members, as that information has been irrelevant. What has been important to me as a parent and a member of this community through years has been the relevant experience of candidates, as well as a commitment to put what is best for students before all other personal agendas or concerns. In terms of the search for a superintendent, it is concerning to me and many in this community that this board felt it was necessary to require a future superintendent to be, and I quote, "be a leader of conservative values." That is flat out wrong, and I would say it was wrong even if the board reflected my personal political leanings. The very best candidate is a candidate that should be hired to be at the helm of the fifth largest school district in the state. That candidate's personal politics should be largely irrelevant to the question of their suitability and qualifications. I have no idea what the personal politics of Dr. Wise, Dr. Hamilton, Dr. Bowers, or Dr. Stahl, nor was it relevant to how they perform their jobs in guiding this school district ever forward. This is exactly how it should be. Conservative or liberal, a position on the school board should never serve as a hobby horse for members to foist their personal political preferences onto students, staff, or the community. This kind of thinking is short-sighted and self-indulgent. Perhaps this board needs to be reminded that it has been elected and has taken an oath to serve our entire, very diverse, community, not just the most local campaign supporters. A nonpartisan school board unites the community, helping to bring together diverse community members and stakeholders who may have different political affiliations, but share the common goal of improving education for all students. Nonpartisan board positions help reduce the influence of political parties and special interest groups or individuals in decision-making processes. Nonpartisan boards prioritize the best interests of students and the quality of education in their district. This focus on the best interests of students and the quality of education means that the decisions made by this type of board are ones that are viewed by their communities as well-considered and sound. Conversely, partisanship creates divisions and hinders progress on important educational issues. Partisanship fosters mistrust and suspicion. At a time when the mistrust in the community of this inexperienced school board is at a historically high level, the injection of a necessary political partisanship into the search for a superintendent only deepens that mistrust. Similarly, the hiring of an extreme right-wing attorney who seems to have worn out his welcome in his own district appears to indicate that the board is only interested in viewing issues through a particular radical lens, which is a significant cause of suspicion and mistrust throughout the community. Although this board has demonstrably struggled with transparency and accountability, it is not too late to build trust with the wider community, but that would require making a commitment to view the job through a wider lens than your personal ideologies. Guiding this district should never be viewed as a zero-sum game, regardless of who is sitting on this dais, because the price will be primarily paid by one group, our students. Enclosing districts with competent nonpartisan boards garner respect and admiration from around the state as opposed to being an object of ridicule and pity. That means that highly qualified candidates will come to work here. Families will want to move here. Businesses will flourish here. The community will come together to support the needs of students. Trust is built. Property values increase so that when more funds are needed, the community will respond appropriately. I think we can all agree that fostering that sort of culture should be the ultimate goal, not cheap, short-lived political victories. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for continuing to allow parents and community members to speak on their thoughts here. My name is Amanda. I'm a parent to two students in Southwestern City Schools. Being in this district, we've really appreciated so many things that are available here, from accelerated classes, sports, access to free college credits, and the many incredible teachers and other staff we've been blessed with. We have had many changes to our school board lately and many more changes since. There were a lot of promises made that don't seem to have been fulfilled. Instead of transparency, we're getting almost completely redacted records and secret meetings going on outside of this building. Instead of good fiscal stewardship, we are spending more and more money on things totally unrelated to education while our district is chronically understaffed. Instead of a respect for these school board positions and the responsibility that they hold, it often feels very disrespectful to the people that ran for the positions, to the community members, and our students. We talk a lot about parents' rights, but it seems a lot like parents' responsibilities have somehow shifted into a parent's right to make our public school district raise every child how they want their children raised, rather than parents actually parenting. You have the right to put in the day-to-day work of teaching your child and raising them the way you want them to be raised in your own home. You do not have the right to push this off in favor of simply banning anything you don't like or pushing agendas that you do support, especially when they have nothing to do with education during school hours. That is not parents' rights, that is lazy parenting. Us parents have the right and the responsibility to make this world, starting in our community and public school system, a better place. We have the right and the responsibility to make it a place of kindness, acceptance, safety, and support. We have the right and the responsibility to make sure that our children do not end up with less rights than we grew up having. We have the right and the responsibility to make sure that our public schools are teaching actual facts, history, critical thinking, and healthy social and emotional skills. We have the right and the responsibility to make sure that those entrusted with overseeing our public education actually support public education. I can imagine so many incredible things for our community. I imagine it being a place where everyone feels accepted and welcomed, where all children know that they are not only free to be themselves and pursue their dreams, but are encouraged and supported in doing so, where when we have an open position in our district, well-qualified candidates rush to apply for it because they know that we respect value and protect our teachers and staff, where when a family is moving to the area from out of state, they hear about our district's reputation and they want to move here rather than any other district because they know that we are focused on providing an education that will carry our children in the future, not a district using innocent children as pawns to push fear mongering and indoctrination. I imagine our community being a place where people do not feel comfortable, let alone emboldened, to stand in front of a room of strangers and make homophobic, hateful, or disgusting comments. We can be a place known for prioritizing our people's well-being, protecting their rights and freedoms, and providing opportunities and quality education, and increasing our time, energy, and money, pushing an agenda or culture war, or being easy prey for grifters. We have many ways we can choose to grow and better ourselves in the environments that we are creating for our children, and I'm really excited to see the community and the board work together to make good choices in the next school year and all of the ones that follow. Thank you all for your.
Thank you, Amanda. Having a dialogue to discuss, and very likely to discuss.
I wanted to say something. Yes, this past Friday, I was able to volunteer over the Century Village. I tried to inherit this. Um, it's part of the Grove City. Mr. Sage, you know about this, the Century Village and the historical society that they have here in Grove City is amazing, and I had the honor, I was blessed to be able to volunteer over there on Friday. Some of the schools in the district had a field trip over there, and it was amazing. So, but they're always looking for volunteers, so I didn't tell them, a little plug-in, if you, especially right now, the school's doing tours and everything and field trips. It was a really great opportunity to see all the great students and the teachers and the staff come out with their students and check out the little Century Village over there, the schoolhouse, the store, and the barns and everything. So that was really neat. So I'm not sure if you guys got that email, but if you did, find a pocket where you can go over there. I highly recommend.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? All right, I'll move to your journey. Can I get a little journey? Mrs. Martindale, second. Mrs. Peterson, thank you. Roll call.
It's Martindale.
Thank you.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, everybody, for being here. Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right. Well, thanks for having me. Whoa.